Thank you. Were there any announcements?
Yes. Calling all Oaks teachers, parents, students, and friends, save the date for the Oaks 50th Anniversary Celebration held at Oaks Elementary School on November 5th, starting at 1:00 PM. Visit the Oaks Elementary School 50th Anniversary Facebook page for updates and more information.
Thank you. Public to be heard on agenda items? Moving on is an action item. Is there a motion? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I had talked to one of the township supervisors in Limerick today about the transportation study. It to me didn't make much sense since this addition doesn't add any traffic. He said that if we should ask for a waiver for that and the board may grant it. So I think it should be amended that we at least ask for to have that waived. It's $32,000 and why pay that if they're willing to waive it? But we won't know unless we ask.
I'm not under the impression that that's possible. My understanding is we were presented with this resolution over the last week or so and we have to accept it and the township is going to, I believe, take action on it tomorrow evening. So I have not heard anything to suggest that a waiver is possible under these circumstances.
I asked one of the supervisors and that's what he told me today. He can't grant it, the board has to. But he said if we ask, it may be granted.
I, listen, I-
Let's not dance around it. You guys had a preliminary meeting with the township. You guys discussed it, right? The waiver and what were you told?
I had no meeting with the township. It would've been the-
Well, who was Bruce?
I was there and also Barry was there. They told us they would not waive that, they could not waive that for a couple of different reasons and that it was based on the 2008 in which we paid when we did the addition to the high school. We also paid the same waiver then which we asked for and was denied at that time.
Who's "they" when you said you had a meeting?
They, the township supervisor. We had a supervisor meeting with everybody and all their engineers and their solicitor was there at the same time.
So that was a public meeting?
Pardon me?
That was a public meeting, you're saying?
No, that was not. It was a private meeting with just all their supervisors. The township engineers and also township manager was also there and with their solicitor was there also. At that meeting, we, and our engineer that was doing the site drawings, asking for all the waivers, they waived this, I think it was seven or eight waivers and they did not waive that one. I specifically asked for that one to be waived. I said because we're not actually building it because we're not adding more students to the building. All we're doing is adding it so our curriculum could work better and work within the school district better. I got the data to the student growth where it was from our administration and I took that and showed them too and they said it does not go by that, it goes by the square footage and that's what that, they adopted back in 2008.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
I think that if one of us is free tomorrow night and wants to go to the township meeting, I may go and ask to have that waived out of that even though the board has approved it because we want to move this forward, but publicly ask them to waive the fee. I don't understand what the fee is for either, so. Alright, presentations. Mr. Moyer.
While Mrs. Bowlinger and the students are coming over, just to follow up, I know the, you received a tidbit on the Oaks 50th and I just want to follow up with that. Again, it is Sunday, November 5th. It's an open house, 1 o'clock to 4:00 in the afternoon. The actual 50th year of the Oaks School as we know it today occurred during the 1966-67 school year. So we're really in the 51st year currently, however, we needed a little bit of extra time to plan this. Just a couple of quick, fast facts about the school. The groundbreaking for the Oaks School occurred in March of 1965 and as we were going through memorabilia, I stumbled across the dedication which took place in January of 1967. And in there, they had a breakdown of costs and I found it humorous by today's standard, but that school, which is on just about 25 acres, was built for $1.2 million. So when you put that into perspective, it's, you know, I guess that probably wasn't a bargain in the day. Also, another fact, many of you probably don't know this, but the very first principal of that school happened to be my father. And he will be attending at age 84, he will be attending the celebration on the 5th of November. So if you're available, again, it's an open house and we're encouraging all former, current, past, anybody who was associated with Oaks to come out and have an enjoyable afternoon. Now, on to our presentation. Last spring, Oaks was here and we presented information to you about our musical gym staying within fine arts and this year, we're going to take things one step further and really highlight the art program at Oaks. And it's something that we're all very, very proud of. And I know Mrs. Karen Bowlinger, who is the art teacher, just really does an amazing job with the program and every year, I'm amazed with some of the works that the kids produce. So again, tonight is just to give you really an overview of what goes on in an art program, again, highlighting Oaks. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Bowlinger.
Thanks, everybody, for coming to this. Thank you for having me and our students from Oaks. They are very, very excited, we all are. Pablo Picasso said that every child is born an artist and the real work of an artist is to remain one as you grow up. I think after what you see today, you'll all agree that the group here from Oaks definitely are already artists and they're very hardworking and very excited to share what they've been doing in our class. We, in the art program, do painting, drawing, ceramics, printmaking, art history, and sculpture. So what I've brought along today are some highlights of our program. I certainly wouldn't have you see everything, but I did bring some highlights and many examples of what we do. So we're going to start with kindergarten. And what you're looking at on the screen is a collaborative sculpture where every student made a section of it. This was inspired by American artist Louise Nevelson where they arranged found objects and glued them together and then we picked a color together as a group that we painted it with. We also learned about the artist Mondrian and his use of lines, shapes, and primary And we, in kindergarten, are currently working on these. We're working on some Vincent Van Gogh sunflower paintings. And with that, I'm going to bring one of my kindergarten artists out here in just a moment, but the question is, can you spot the real Van Gogh in this grouping? So I'm going to call Elliot Buchanan and I'm going to hold up Jamison Miller's painting. Elliot, who was the artist who your name tag was inspired by? Do you remember? Okay, that was Mondrian. And then her painting is the Vincent Van Gogh painting. But she and Jamison both did an amazing job and he couldn't make it tonight, but thank you, Elliot, for coming and showing us your paintings. Okay, next up, we have first grade. First graders used a variety of different types of lines to create shapes where they intersected and connected and that's one of our, one of our curricular goals for first grade. They also use crayon resist to preserve their outlines before they paint it. And sharing an example of this type of painting with us today is Lila Morrow. So Lila did a really nice example of this project and she's showing it right now. What was your favorite thing about this? That you could draw all kinds of lines? You did an awesome job. Do you want to show the group behind you? Turn around, show them too. Want to come back? Awesome. And there's just some more examples on the screen from this lesson. We have with us today a third grader who'll be sharing her pumpkin in a little while, but the ceramic project that she did two years ago that we do once in a while is the Wayne Thibault-inspired pop art cupcakes. And Leah's with us. Leah, can you wave? Leah, wave? She'll be coming out in a minute. First graders also made penguins out of model magic and on the second grade. So in second grade, we use a variety of mixed media techniques. We combine glue, chalk, paint, you name it. And with us today, I have Alexa West and Quinn Buchanan who can share with us what they've been doing. Come on out, guys. And I recruited a stand-in to hold the example by Miles Church. So these three artists used, what did you use to trace your pumpkins with after you drew them? What did you trace the drawing with? You traced it with glue? Yes, they traced these with Elmer's glue and then filled them in using chalk and they blended a lot to make these. Can you guys show the group behind us? Fantastic. So they did chalk pastel pumpkins. And second graders only, because I know my fourth grader who's holding Miles's project knows this. What do we call it when we add a lighter color to a color to make it look like the light's shining on it? You did blend and it's a, when you make it darker in a spot, it's the, now they're on the spot. I'm not going to quiz them anymore. They learned about highlights and shadows, they did a lot of blending, they did a great job. So I'm not going to quiz them during the presentation, that's not fair. They did awesome. You guys, great job. You guys sit down. And we've got, these are just some other things that we've done. We've done some fan brush paintings. They learned about Pablo Picasso. They do harlequin-inspired self-portrait prints. And we're on to third grade. So third graders, for their sculpture and construction unit, learn a lot about assembling and constructing. We use a variety of techniques for them to build the inner supports for their pumpkins and I'm going to call, I'm going to call my pumpkin crew out here. You can pick up your pumpkins, bring them on out? And they do know the words for these, we went over this, but gang, what do we call the inside support of your pumpkin? What's it called? I know Connor knows. The armature. Thank you, Connor. Thank you. So they built their armatures using newspaper and old paper that we were recycling and then we wrapped them. What did we wrap them with, gang? Sheets of plaster? Thank you, Mia. So they wrapped them with plaster? I feel like we're on a game show and losing, and losing at the game show. They wrapped them with plaster and then they painted them and they look awesome. So yeah, they, these look, these really make our, or the lobby look great. I have a few photos of our hallway, of our lobby display and they really make our hallways welcoming during this time of year. Thank you, third grade, for bringing these. We also do some resist paintings. We learn different watercolor techniques. These are some of our watercolor birch tree paintings, showing different seasons. Hey, Oaks artists. Oaks artists. Thank you. And coming up, we have some examples of our ceramics project for third grade, which is a two-part process. We build a bottom and a top. These are inspired by canopic jars from ancient Egypt where these would be used during the process of mummification. The bottoms of the jars are inscribed by our students using hieroglyphics. The kids learn how to translate their names into hieroglyphics and carve their name into the base. And the head, traditionally in ancient Egypt, would feature a baboon, falcon, human, or a jackal. Our students were asked to choose a significant animal or human that they wanted to have protect, important keepsakes. So I have a fourth grader here who is bringing his finished project from last year. This is Ayon Rige. Ayon, did I say a last name? How do I say a last name? Regi, I'm sorry. I apologize. Ayon Regi. He is showing his project and it turned out fantastic. So he's got his example with us today. Thank you, Ayon. Awesome. On the screen, we also have some other examples from this project from years past where we used different colorful glazing techniques, variety of different animals. And there we go. And we're on to fourth grade. So fourth grade's project for, their clay project is a ceramic coil pot. These are a few examples. They learned score and slip welding. We practiced a lot of that in third grade to gear them up for this. You'll see a variety of different outcomes from that assignment. And we also do a multi-color printmaking project. So I'm going to call out Arush, Kaylee, and Ayon to bring out their printing plates and artworks. Come on out, guys. I know this is a lot to hold. They're also showing you their foam printing plate that they created. So they, there we go. So they learned about what artist, fourth graders, what artist did we learn about for these?
Andy Warhol.
Oh, thank you. Andy Warhol. Thank you. Andy Warhol. And yes, and they did a series of pop art-inspired self-portrait prints using a multi-color process. So gang, why don't you turn around and show, show everybody. We do printmaking through every grade level, but the goal for fourth grade is to work our way up to multi-color, to gear them up for fifth grade. You did a great job. Thank you, gang. These are a few other examples from our art shows in the past. You can see those. And we also do weavings. The kids really do get excited about yarn weavings. The one you see on the screen is woven over recycled seedy. But what the kids really get excited about are making pillows. We have one student, Ayon, brought his in-progress loom. We start these at the beginning of the year and this is just a go-to if they finish something early. You can see how he has his loom dressed and he's got it going. By the time we have our show in May, he should have a finished product. You know, it's not something we work on continuously, he'll just pick it up and work on it during downtime. Looks good, though. And then these are just some pictures of our end-of-the-year art show where every child in the school, you might see the banners in the presentation where you'll see their name across the top, followed by all their work hanging beneath it. Every one of our 600 students is represented with one of these banners. Thankfully, I get a lot of help. So if it weren't for the army of parent volunteers that come in and give me a hand with this, it just wouldn't be possible. But it is amazing to see everything that our kids have made lining our hallways at the end of the year. So these are just a few of our end-of-the-year art show photos and again, I thank you. Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job. Really looks great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a presentation, Dr. Roche, I think you're going to give it tonight. Obviously, Dr. Gooden couldn't be here.
I'm here tonight to share with you the back-to-school presentation that Dr. Gooden had prepared and unfortunately, he was unable to be here tonight. So I'll do my best to walk you through how we opened up the school year from a district First, we're starting off with transportation, which I know right now seems to be a hot topic in the community, but you know, first of all, so there's no question that transportation's a hot topic on social media from what I hear and all about for the parents, especially in the schools because I'm out and about and try to help out with dismissal if I can and I know five, six, and seventh grade building there has had some challenges, but we're continuing to work hard. So please, please understand that from transportation, I'll use a little plug here, that all the number of students, I'm not going to read to you what's on the screen there in terms of all the information and the facts of what the transportation department does, but with the current challenges that we're having, we're doing our best to communicate, sending at least three letters to all families and a fourth with just the school, the buildings that were impacted negatively with the change. And we're continuing to communicate each building, if they have bus challenges at the end of the day, to do our best to get the students home, number one, safely, and then number two, as quickly as possible. So safety is first and most paramount. Trivia question. Anyone know how many schools we send, we bus to?
Sixty.
Sixty. It says nearly, so you're wrong. It's actually 57. See that? Yes. Just saw a number and threw it out there, but it was actually 57 according to my notes here, so thank goodness for that. But our transportation department does a fantastic job. Again, I know we're in a tough spot right now with the drivers and the buses and the routes, but we're still continuing to try to make sure that the transportation for our field trips and for our experiences for those students are continuing as well during this time and continue to monitor and adjust that. But I do want to recognize the work that our transportation department does. Okay, next is technology. Technology, again, I'm not going to read to you all the facts that are up there and the information that is there and as technology is and as I was pulling Mr. Catalano over before, because later in the next presentation I have, I have a technology piece that I'm praying is going to work. We often don't talk about them until it's not working, but there's a tremendous amount of work that's done during the summer and during the school year and monitoring all throughout there. And the amount that, to get ready for students to come back and for teachers to come back and staff and to make it work as fluently as possible is a monumental task. I think we do a fantastic job. Can always get better and we always know the wifi will never support what students are going to say or in the immediacy of everything that's going to happen, it's going to happen right now and I'm included in that in terms of turning it on and be like, "Oh, it's not working." That's because they didn't plug it in. Alright, so, but technology has done a fantastic job and every school year brings new challenges and we continue to bring new items on for our staff and students. Next is food service. So food service, I know, is always a, is a topic of conversation, especially with the students. Every survey we get from our students, the number one thing is school lunches and typically not positive in terms of wanting to have more choice and more this and go out and bring in outside vendors and we, on the other side of that, much like we have curriculum, we also have rules that govern some of the foods and things that we can serve our students. I will share with you, during the first week of school, our sales from last year first week are up 6%. So we are in the right trajectory and for myself, having two, having three school-aged children at home, it's always a battle in terms of what the school's going to provide and what they're going to bring from home. So that's a constant conversation that's going on, I'm sure, at many of our homes. But I know Paula and her department is getting out, going back-to-school nights, trying to meet with parents, trying to have student survey groups during the school day. I try to find as many of those because they usually have samples and that's a good thing to see what new things are out there that are potentially healthy and meet those requirements that students are going to want to participate and have lunch with. So, but there's a lot of lunches per day in terms of supporting the students here at our schools and I think some of the staff take a part of that as well. Next, just a quick, couple of words about curriculum and instruction. Obviously, the backbone of what we're working on, Ramquest continuing in the next year here is expanding out to some Lego robotic kits and software. We have new math programs going in, five to eight, as well as at the secondary level. For those that are at high school level, modernized learning is expanding and continuing with fourth grade, Roy'sford for hybrid learning are just a few things that are, that are going on in those areas that are, that we're proud of. Happy to say that we continue to value and work on our in-service opportunities to support curriculum instruction and teachers getting together to discuss assessments and to continue to learn and grow. Don't forget, when we have in-service days, which are limited throughout the year, we have curriculum instruction work that needs to get done. We have building level goals, which the principals are always requesting additional time. We have district goals and then we set aside some time for parent-teacher conferences. So we want to make sure that we're maximizing that time underneath that umbrella of curriculum instruction and providing great support and service for our teachers and to our parents. Just as a quick side note, plug here, parent-teacher conferences are set for Thursday evening, November 16th, Monday, November 20th, all day, as well as in the evening, and then on the November 21st, additional conferences for kindergarten and fifth and sixth grade teachers. Also, on November 21st, we are currently working on a professional development plan for our teachers, the other grade levels, which I didn't mention, for a conference format where there's choice. So we have, and we're trying to empower and have our teachers teach our, teach their colleagues and their peers because we have awesome teachers and to get them to teach their colleagues and provide that time to teach and learn from each other is extremely valuable and we want to continue to promote that, as well as we're continuing to work on a couple of keynotes that'll come, bring in some new ideas during that day. So that's November 21st. That's a big professional development day that curriculum department, curriculum instruction department's working on. So teachers out there, I'm sure you saw the emails come out to get you guys to potentially present, but what could be powerful, too, is if you ask your colleagues, "Hey, why don't you present?" Or "Why don't we present together?" There's some power there as well, so we would love to see that. That's curriculum instruction. Next, with communication, marketing, and media, we had another Spring Ford, back-to-Spring Ford night, which was very successful. We had another, what they call first-day verifications, which took place in August as well and we're still fine-tuning that and we continue to add things and as we go through the years of first-day verifications, we'll continue to get better at forums and making it as seamless as possible and we're going to do that and obviously, continue to add shows, programs, and then utilize the television studio, RCTV, and all of our social media outlets as well to continue to support the district. And then the final piece of the presentation tonight is just to address the efforts that have been made in the safety and security areas with the district going, with the ALIS Training Program for all the way through from K to 12 as a general guideline. I know there's been a parent presentation here, which was well-attended a couple of weeks ago and our elementary teachers are working through the I'm Not Scared, I'm Prepared book with the students, taking their time to learn that piece and there's a tremendous amount of work done this summer with a group from the elementary level, including principals and teachers and counselors, to make sure that rolled out nice and safe for everybody. And then now doing drills, grades five to 12, getting into some things that we hope we never have to address, never have to work with, barricading rooms, rendezvous points, those type of things, but unfortunately, where we are in society, it's conversations we have to have. And we're having it as delicately as we can with the younger kids, as straightforward as we can with the older kids, so that if it ever happens here at Spring Ford or anywhere in their lives, they'll be ready to address it at any point as best possible with, of course, the adults continuing to lead the way and provide that guidance as best we can. Almost like, like I said, like insurance, nothing we ever want to even have that conversation, but you can't turn the news on these days without that. So fortunately, we have, we have our police officers and security as well helping the principals and the teacher leaders through this process. So, and again, we'll continue to monitor that as we go through and keep that going as the year goes along. I believe that's the end of the update for the school year, for the beginning of school, back-to-school. Is there any questions? Anyone has?
I have a question regarding the busing. Has Custer's given us a corrective action plan with a timeline as to when they're going to fix, what actions they're taking and when they expect to have the problem resolved?
I don't have that information. I've been a part of that conversation in terms of a specific action plan or the exact resolution date. I know they're continuing to hire, continuing to have people come onboard. What I'm hearing is the market for drivers is getting extremely competitive, so they continue to, just continue to try to hire and we're continuing to adjust on our end. If Mrs. Anderson was here, which I don't see her, she would have a better handle on that answer. I apologize.
Yes, I'd like to see that and know if they're statusing that weekly or whatever.
Yep, we'll get that for you.
Periodically.
I think that's fair.
Any other questions or comments? Byrne, you want to say something?
No, I just want to thank Alan and the whole staff and everyone involved, going off such a smooth start with the school year this year and you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Same thing, Alan. I think it's a great presentation when you see how far, you know, we talked a little bit about busing, just that one thing, per day, almost 9,000. per day, almost nine thousand miles is really crazy to think of that. And then all the other programs we've added and how we've moved forward. I have a quick question. Will we be seeing the PSSAs at the next meeting or?
Next week, the twenty-third.
Next week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We still don't have SVP, the numbers, even though we were promised several times, they're still not in as of today, so.
Okay. All right, moving on. Student report?
As we all know, last week was Spirit Week and Springford's win against the Boyertown Bears. Students and teachers are all, all enjoy dressing up and showing great amount of school spirit, which all led up to our annual Powderpuff game, which raised ten thousand dollars for Camp Rainbow and the Homecoming Dance. Furthermore, the SATs were held on November seventh, along with the PSATs, which were held on October eleventh, for all sophomores and registered juniors. Lastly, the first marking period will be ending on November second. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Policy, Colleen?
So, the policy committee met on October ninth, and we had with us myself and Mr. Denner, Mr. DiBello from the board. Also joining us were Dr. Patschke and Mrs. Germanario. And they visited the meeting to share some suggested, suggested edits to policy two forty-six, which is about the student wellness. Based upon recommendations that they, that were received from the district wellness committee and as a result of changes from PDE related to school nutrition services, the additional work is needed on some of the suggested changes. And the administration will bring those changes or updates to the November committee meeting. So, we continue to work on that student wellness policy. The next one we talked about was student attendance, policy two oh four. The committee reviewed that policy, the revised policy based upon changes made by PDE and state laws regarding school attendance truancy, school attendance improvement plans, and petitions to court for students who are considered habitually truant. The updated policy is on the agenda for our first reading tonight. Sick leave was updated, also that's in policy four eighty-four. There was an update needed due to the change in the, from the professional agreement, and the committee reviews this revised policy that needed to be updated based on the new language in the teacher's contract regarding sick leave and unused sick time. The updated policy is also on the agenda for our first reading tonight. We moved on to policy one oh three, nondiscrimination and participation employment contract practices. At the suggestion of the school attorney, a revised draft of policy one oh three was considered by the committee, and the policy was asked to be returned next month with further clarification based upon a question in one area. Since the committee meeting, the attorney has provided the administration with a newer interruption of the policy change that includes a revision to policy one oh three and adding a policy one oh four to the book of policies. Additional conversations will take place on both of these policies in the next committee meeting. Little wordy, but that's where we are with that. We did talk about the community use of school grounds and playgrounds. Policy was discussed and additional changes will be shared at the November committee meeting. And the use of the all-weather track, that policy was discussed, and those additional changes will be shared also at the November committee meeting. We had no discussion this week on the, or this month, on the use of facilities, as we are waiting for some feedback from property and finance about that. And the, that was about it for that night. So, our next meeting is Monday, November thirteenth. All are welcome to come, and thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. DiBello, the next three.
Extracurricular meeting met October ninth, six-thirty at the district office. We have a few presentations. We started off with the high school theater fall musical, or production. It's not a musical, musicals in the springtime, but they are presenting The Christmas Carol. Shows are scheduled for November seventeenth and eighteenth. There were thirty-six students that tried out, and all students are going to be in the show. Majority actually have speaking spots, spots as well. The goal is to get another twenty to thirty kids involved in the production as well. So, as, as Ms. Obloch has stated in the past, their goal is to continually get as many kids involved with those theater productions as possible, and I think that they've been holding true to that over the last several productions. Then we had a athletic, high school athletic update from Mr. McDaniel. We went over the participation. I'm not going to go through all the, the participation numbers. I will have point out, and if you have a chance, look at the meeting minutes, it'll be posted on the website, or at our board site. But this year, there was four hundred ninety-nine kids participating in the seventeen-eighteen school year, and we're up about ten students. Last year was four hundred eighty-nine students that participated in all the different activities, and this is ninth through twelfth grade. Their overall records have been pretty impressive as, as always this year. Several teams are doing extremely well. Our girls tennis won the Pac-ten championship. They were eleven and oh. Tori Alexander won the Pac singles championship, and the team advances to district play. The boys' golf pack, they, they won that championship, and they're nine and one. Ben Pochette was a Pac individual championship, and seven of the eight players advanced to district play as well. And the team also advanced to district play. So, and I hope to see us honoring these kids over the next month or two. There was a brief conversation with the follow-up. If you remember, in last year, we did talk about the coaches certification, and we, we kind of debated back and forth about how we would, you know, how and if we would pay for that. What the good news is, is that PIAA has changed the recent qual, not qualifications, certifications, and there will be a zero cost to the school district, and the coaches, assistant coaches will participate, be able to utilize the Safe Schools website, and their courses are on that website, and our district already participates in that. So, there, as I said, there's no cost for the coaches to get their sort of, the required certifications. And lastly, there was a follow-up presentation. If you remember also last year, I brought to the board, we talked about the possibility expanding seventh and eighth grade sports to include two teams, some of the, some of the, uh, uh, different, for boys and girls, for some of the different sports, looking at baseball, softball, basketball. And main reason is that both seventh and eighth grade, there's many kids that are trying out and, and they're getting cut, because you can only have several kid, you know, a limited number of kids per team. The recommendation from Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Racich, was to do a pilot program. Originally, they were looking to see if they could do something spring of two thousand and eighteen, but they don't feel that they'd be able to do the pilot program justice, so they're looking at, starting in the fall of eighteen nineteen. Mr. McDaniel's figuring if they're going to do two teams of basketball or how they're going to do their pilot program, but he is going to come back with identified costs. And again, in the spreadsheet, or in the meeting minutes, there's a spreadsheet attached that if you look, if we did two baseball teams, two softball teams, two basketball teams at both seventh and eighth grade level, if we, if we do all of that, the anticipated costs are somewhere around eighty-four thousand dollars, which includes solid, coaches' salaries, benefits, and, and transportation uniforms, equipment, officials, and training supplies. So, again, they are going to come back with a recommendation as far as what program they want to start or like to start in the, in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. That concludes my report. Any questions? I'm going to do property, I just opened up property. Fortunately, Mr. Cerisi, who does a fabulous job each week, each month, giving a property committee update, wasn't able to attend the meeting, so I have the meeting minutes. We met October tenth at the district office. We, we did get a, an update from Bruce, Mr. Cooper, regarding Crabtree and the Limerick Township approval of what we voted on a little bit ago. I did vote no, because I don't, I didn't, we kind of moved past it real, I, I didn't quite understand why we were voting on a resolution before the township approved it, since it's going tomorrow night, and that could change based on getting in front of the board, so I'm not, I didn't quite understand that. But anyway, we did get an update from Mr. Cooper, talking about the traffic impact fee. I do have to agree with Mr. Denner that we should be, and I know that it was discussed at a pre-meeting that the township has with land development or during the land development process, but there's no reason why we should be paying a traffic impact fee. Update to the high school auditorium lighting, there's no change. It's still targeted to be completed mid-December to the beginning of January. The ENEROC demand response, that's the program that we participated in the last several years, where we get money back as part of that program. That's when we could get a call in the, you know, in the summer to, you know, to shut down our air and our lights and all that. And, and this year, it's, we're figuring, or it's been projected that we'll be looking at somewhere about fifty-three thousand dollars for our participation, which was a little higher than originally anticipated. Ninth grade route, main repairs were completed and will be finalized within the next two weeks. The Brook Elementary replacement of a fire alarm, the panel and everything was completed. They're in the final stages of testing. There is an update to the district office. We, we did talk about the district office and the reconfiguration of the conference room and some of the offices. Crabtree said that they will look at the building drawings and see if they could make some recommendations pro bono, but it's not going to be detailed architectural drawings or anything like that. There'll just be some high-level recommendations as far as how the district office could be reconfigured to be, be a little bit more efficient with the use of space. The ninth grade baseball field fencing, it's about seven hundred feet of fencing will be placed at a cost of eighty-eight hundred dollars. All these projects are part of Bruce's already planned budget for two thousand and eighteen. Do you want me to go through each of these projects, or you want to just suffice that Bruce is on top of his game? Right. And we appreciate everything that he's doing, and like I said, all the projects are within, within what his budget is. We did have a guest appearance by, what was her name? From, from a policy? Who came from policy? Oh, Colleen, that's right.
That was not a guest appearance, I'm on that committee.
Oh, you're on that committee. She came and representing a policy, and as, as mentioned before, she is in the process of gathering information for, as they're looking at modifying or updating the use of facilities, and asked property or facilities to provide information to her over the next month or so as far as what things, facilities, and maintenance would like to see or need change or recommend to have changed within the policy. It's to be clear that these are recommendations, and that's not to say that everything recommended will necessarily be included or not included in the policy, but we do like and want to see all the information that they would recommend. And that, the meeting ended, and next property meeting will be November fourteenth.
I have a question. I have a comment. I will be at that meeting since I am a regular, but aside from that, the, just going back to what Mr. Denner said too, I want to reiterate that in the meeting, when we talked about that traffic impact cost, I believe that we said we would consider it, but at no point did we say that we were in agreement with all of that. Do you recall that conversation, Tom?
Well, the conversation was exactly what I said. I, I didn't feel that, that's something that we should do. Bruce talked about at the preliminary meeting that they have, which is a normal process that the township has as, as part of their land development process, to meet with the, with the party, the interested party in doing the development, or land development. And, and they stepped through all the possible waivers or, or, you know, conditions of the land development, and he clearly stated that it was brought up and talked about and discussed in detail. And, you know, they, who's told, they were told by the township engineer and township solicitor, and I don't know if any supervisors were present in that meeting or not, but they said that they weren't waiving, they would not waive that, that impact fee. So, I'm assuming there's a meeting tomorrow night. I don't know who's going to that meeting, but I think that we should ask again to waive that traffic impact fee. They may do it, they may not. I mean, it's, so we'll see what happens.
Finance?
Finance meeting met October tenth, right after property at seven-thirty. We went through the executive reports and the monthly reports. A few highlights is that we are seeing current assessments up two-point-nine million dollars. Real estate transfers slightly better than expected, and earned income taxes are up as well. So, as part of our first few months into the budget, we're, we're projecting to be on or above, or a little better than a target for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen budget. I do want to say that when I, when I make that statement, that doesn't mean that that will continue forward through the whole year, but right now, that's kind of where we're at. And each month, we'll provide an update as far as how we're, how we're trending with the budget. We did talk about the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget timeline. The goal is to have a budget presentation, work session, at the work session on November twentieth, seeking approval for the budget, the preliminary budget, on November twenty-seventh. At the twenty, the January twenty-second board meeting, we will seek to have the board to adopt the preliminary budget, which is due by February fourteenth. Now, based on this schedule, there's a really good chance that we'll be finishing our preliminary eighteen, nineteen budget before the state passes the seventeen, eighteen budget. So, we, we may get a budget ahead of them, the way they're going.
That doesn't mean we're proud of them.
Well, I'm not saying I'm not proud, I mean, it's, it's.
And the salary that we get paid for it.
Yeah. But, you know, the good news is that they still haven't come up with a spending plan for their two, two billion-plus deficit, so I know that they're working, no, no, they're on, they're on leave right now.
Back after two weeks.
Right. But in all seriousness, there are reports starting to come out, that districts better be paying really close attention to what's going on, because, you know, I've said it before and I'll say it again, they're over two billion dollars short. They have to make up the money somewhere, so it's either find additional funding, or they have to make cuts, or they're borrowing money right now to try to get through. I think they recently borrowed seven hundred million dollars. Jim, I don't know if you saw the, the same reports I saw, but they just recently borrowed seven hundred million dollars. So, really, in a sense, what they're doing is they're just digging a hole deeper. And then finally, we had a guest appearance at our finance committee meeting. Yeah, Colleen was there again. Yeah, almost a regular. We, we told her she, it was, you know, property is over, but she wants to stay for finance. But, you know, she came and, you know, same, same information, same request. It's, it's, now she was looking and requesting information from finance as far as monies that we identify as costs to the district for the use of these facilities. And Mr. Fink and his staff is working diligently on providing or gathering and providing that information, and those details will be provided to policy, I'm, within the next few weeks or so.
Okay, that's the end of your time.
I'm done.
Yeah. Thank you.
The meeting adjourned at eight oh five.
No one has questions, right?
Well, they should.
Ed, you got a question? Why Colleen went to three meetings?
I think I already know, she's a very responsible board member. The question I have has to do with the, the state budget. I mean, our, our budget is based on what we anticipate getting from the state to some extent, is that right? No, we don't know what we're getting from the state, so where does that leave our budget for this year, let alone what's going to happen with next year's budget?
Mr. Fink has a crystal ball that he goes to, because that's about as good as what we get from the state. What's your?
The good news actually is, is that we have experience in this from two years ago. So, that's a positive thing, right? So that's a positive thing, right? No, I'm just joking. We, we, we have adequate reserves, so we're, we're good for, you know, we're good for some time. The monies, as Mr. DeBello pointed out, are still flowing from the state. The question is really on the state side, is where are they pulling them from? So Mr. DeBello mentioned a $2 billion deficit and the differences between what the, what the, what the folks in Harrisburg pass as far as a spending plan versus what they've been at least looking at for a revenue plan.
So we know what we're getting from the state?
They tell us what we're getting.
Okay, so we're.
Let's put it that way. They told us what we're getting. That's what's in the budget.
Okay. They just don't know how they're going to pay for it. That's.
That's right.
Fine. Thank you.
I just want to clarify one point, because I know this can get blown out of proportion, but we have done a great job with budgeting and forecasting in the district. So we just don't have money sitting in account that we have a slush fund for. I don't want the state to even come back and say, well, Springfield has money, they don't need our money. We have properly budgeted, we have properly put money away. We would have to take money out of one account. That would be a future account to pay for the shortfall, if there is a budget shortfall. And eventually, that would catch up with us also if the state were to pull the money and the advance that they've told us that supposedly we're getting. But to reiterate what Mr. DeBello said, I think it's really a shame that here we are toward the end of October, and the state of Pennsylvania still has no budget, still has no idea how they're going to fund the budget. And now, they're once again attacking public education and higher education is the next mark where most of our students go. They're coming after now the state college programs to possibly pull the money from there. So once again, education is the number one target. When it should be the number one target for the right reasons, it's for the wrong ones. I know we have a lot of educators in the audience, and again, I say, like we've said for years, you need to get on your state reps, you need to get on your state senators. Everybody needs to get on them about this because at the end of the day, every one of our students, our communities, our staff will suffer. The referendum question is on the ballot, and no one understands what the referendum question is either. I know, Mr. DeBello, you didn't really talk about that, because I don't know how much it was spoken about.
We, we didn't discuss it at this meeting. I mean, we discussed it in last month. I mean, it's, the unfortunate thing is, no matter how much we discuss it, the information that's being put out there is inaccurate, and it's coming from a lot of different PSBA and, you know, political parties and all that. And they're all pushing it as a first, as a property tax reduction, which it's not. But you can't, you can't fight what, you can't fight the propaganda that's putting out there.
Thank you. Dr. Roach. I know you've been patiently waiting.
Thank you. I usually normally don't do a stand-up presentation for my monthly report, but Mr. Cerisi told me to jazz it up this month and, and do something a little more. So at least that's, that's what I heard, whether he said it that way or not. So I put together a little presentation. Yes, yeah.
It's been a while. Such a good job.
I know, I know. This one's really not that jazzy. It's got a couple of videos. Couple of videos, but, so when I was thinking about the report and knowing that Dr. Gooden was going to be doing a report on what was going on, and I always try to, I always compete with the students about what that's, what's going, what, what they give you in a report. So I figured I'd take a moment to just kind of share with you, maybe not. This doesn't work. Okay, so I want to share with you a little bit about some of the work that I do that you may not know about, because it's not, not in the newspaper, and it's not on the front page of the website, those type of things. But a big part of the, the work that I work is in pupil services. And I'm happy to do it and enjoy working with the, the teachers and the administrators, as well as the students. So pupil services oversees all of special education, keep going, works with all school counselors, psychologists, the nurses, homeless school visitor, and then all the related service providers. So so you think about speech and language, hearing specialists, occupational and physical therapists, as well as oversee all homeschooling, homebound education, and supporting homeless students. So I go back, that ties to the slide you just saw there, because I'm the one that gets to work with all the counselors and all the nurses and everyone on students that are struggling, providing services to those students. And that's, it's growing. That's an area that continues to grow. And you talk about home, homeschooling students. We see students that may be struggling in, in the environment here or in the cyber world and want to go to homeschooling. We do have some homeschooling students that as you get older, that want to come to get educated at a higher level here, let's say, than, than more than get it home. But homebound continues to increase. Students are in crisis or in other areas and go out for some support. And we continue to work with them and, and teachers, some teachers go to their homes and work with them, as well as set up other tutoring pieces. And then we have homeless students. And I, I think homeless students, there was an article that came out a couple of months, maybe over a year ago, about the homeless situation in Springfield. And the percentages was higher than normal people thought. But it's not the impression, the stereotypical homeless situation. Some are, but not, not at that level. Some are doubled up with friends or just in, in tough living situations. So I share all that with you to share that this is an area of need and support and service for our students that, that continues to grow. And the, the folks that are working with the students directly are, are seeing that. And always, we're always looking for new ways and new, new areas to support. So that ties to mental health, because we start to see information and, and challenges with students with mental health. So I share with you some additional supports. We, we do our best to connect students and families with outside counseling help and provide accommodations or, or work with and find some middle ground for some folks that are, that are really struggling. And sometimes it's, it's the homeless situation, and there's laws that got, that guidance homeless. So if we have a student that's homeless, that finds a place to live in Ben Salem, that we are responsible to get that student back to us here every day, if that has to work out. That's an extreme case, but that's one that, that, that there's a law there to protect them. So we also have a student assistance program here, which, you know, is, is for, we have a referral process, as well as IST at the K to four level, which, again, is academic, but is also that behavioral and that support system as well. And you, you've heard some of these terms before. You've heard resiliency, mentorship programs, mindfulness, and professional development, all things that we continue to do and work with our students and our staff to, to provide that piece. But mental health is an area that's growing and concerning, where we're doing our best and trying to stay ahead of that and provide services and supports. And, and the board has done that as well with some additional staff in the past couple of years to help support that as well. I want to share with you a quick video here of a professional development program that I'm proud of, that, that, that our secondary, our, our teachers in grades five to 12 participated during our first three days, and our K to four teachers were able to participate this past month, last Monday. A program about mental health, about suicide awareness, and about trauma-based instruction. So I have a quick video here to kind of give you a recap of that, just to let you know that we're continuing to do our best with our, our faculty and staff, and as well as a lot of support staff, and even 12-month secretary staff attended, because they work with kids on a daily basis as well. And they need these skills, and they need to know these, these pieces. And I can tell you from, from sitting there, again, as I reference my own children, some parents are, some faculty are sitting there through the lens of being a parent as well. And that's a helpful piece of what we're providing for them.
There is no question that many of our staff work directly with our students on a daily basis and are the go-to person for many of them. The presentations on August 24th and October 9th had three main presenters who are representatives from Springfield Counseling, Lakeside Global Education, and Creative Health Services, all of whom directly support our students during the school year.
When suicide occurs, it really does affect the community. And when a young person dies, that is absolutely multiplied. What we are hoping to do today is to raise warning signals of individuals who are thinking about suicide, particularly students. Warning signs are a way that students ask for help with actually saying words they need help. So our goal today is to try to educate our staff members, as well as teachers, what those warning signs are, and to be proactive with getting help for those students.
What we're finding is that school personnel really do need to be trauma-informed in terms of their work with students. Not every student that comes into our classrooms or into our offices has necessarily been impacted by trauma, but many have. And the recognition of that and understanding what trauma does to students and how it impacts them, and how we can better serve them both in the classroom and through the counseling time is really important. And I think that's, that's its overall impact on the community.
I'll be talking to the staff about their mental health and what they can do, taking all this information and helping themselves prepare for being in class and teaching the students. I think it's very beneficial to be doing it in a large group like this. I think it's, it's very important that each of the staff members get to talk with each other, share their experiences. There's lots of years of experience in this room. So just to have that opportunity to talk with one another, understand what's going on, and maybe think about something that somebody else says that they haven't thought for themselves.
The entire staff, K through 12, had attended this presentation, and all of the information shared will help support students, families, and staff members.
Those are pretty cool graphics that were laid over top. I know, I did, I told you. Thank you, thank you. So you're going to keep going there? Just, there you go. So some ongoing work that we're working on the pupil services area. We're continuing to take roles and responsibilities of our pupil services employees to make sure that we're, we're streaming line things and doing our best that we can. We're adjusting the role of social worker so that she can work more with students and families for students and families that are transitioning back to our buildings, as well as if they need to help with, get connected with outside, outside services. Continuing to do targeted professional development with the pupil services people as well, and that are listed there, as well as all of our teachers. And that'll be a part of that choice sessions as well, as I mentioned on November 20, 21st. We're continuing to look at our curriculum to make sure that at social, social, emotional age levels in our grades going up, that we're providing some support in some mental health conversations and curriculum, as well as we have prevention programs. When I talked to that triangle piece that was so jazzed up there, talked about having creative health, Springfield Counseling, and Lakeside. We are very special to have those three groups in our district to continue to support our teachers and our, our students. And we are exploring a new student club. We have a couple, a couple teachers taking students in grade seven, eight, and then a nine to 12 team to get trained in a, in a club that's designed to be a catch-all-for-all and a welcoming piece for everyone that's, that's designed around those four concepts up there of accept, appreciate, acknowledge, and care. So that's something else we're working on with students that was, I thought was a missing piece that was there. And then we're going to continue to work with our counseling groups to provide those areas of support for our families. Okay. So before we take our iPhones out, are there any questions on the mental health piece? Again, and I just bring that up to you because right, right now, I'm enthralled in that in terms of the work that I'm doing, and I wanted to share that with you. And, and I'm, I'm happy and supportive to work, be working with, with the teachers and the administrators on that area.
I just have a question on the cyber and the homeschool students. I know we went through developing our own cyber program, was it four years ago or so?
More than that, yeah.
It's more than that? How many students do we have enrolled in that now?
Currently, we're at 19 or 20.
And have you picked up a couple every year who come back from the cyber program?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an ebb and a flow. Not all students are successful in the cyber program. They're just, it seems like a solution right away. And we, they initially was designed to bring students back from cyber programs financially, as well as we believe that the program is, is, is solid and can connect kids back to Springfield. We do have requests each year for parents, from parents for students that are in our schools right now, say, I'd like to take that cyber option. We, we don't allow that jump right away just on a request. We try to exhaust all possibilities at the building level with any sort of accommodation or anything we can do, providing support or homebound or anything that we can do to support that student before going to that level. So it's, it's, if we went on every request, it would be higher, but I really think that we're doing the, the right thing by making people take time to have those conversations, because some of those students that do transition back, they're, there's not daily classes on there. They have, they have certain expectations, and it doesn't work for everyone. For some, it does work very well. And they always have the option to, to go to a, a cyber charter that's out there, although we would want to, we want to have that conversation before they did that.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Roach, I hear you say that we are responsible for transporting somebody from Ben Salem. Is that, is that the Ben Salem in New Jersey?
No.
No.
Lower box. If in the event that a student is deemed homeless and has been, been a student inside Springfield Area School District, and they were homeless, and the only place that they could find a place to put their head down at night is Ben Salem, we use that example. We have some stu, we have one or two students or even more in Philadelphia or anywhere. There are laws protecting it, protecting students that are homeless, McKinney-Vento law, that, that protects them, because the, the law states that what they need is they need stability. They don't care about the school district and what it costs. What's most important to that student in that time of crisis is to be in a stable school environment every day.
So we, we are responsible for.
Well, again, responsible. That's where you get, you get a, a relationship with, let's say, Ben Salem. Well, maybe they'll, they'll drive them halfway and we'll pick them up. Or you work those type of things out. Philadelphia a little, you, you could be talking about tokens to get kids to a certain point on a train and then, and do that type of thing. So there's a lot of creative ways to handle that. I mean, the initial conversation may be, if you're already in Ben Salem, that may be better for you to, to go there. And if they choose that, that, they have that right as well. Even though they're not a resident of Ben Salem, McKinney-Vento gives them that right, that if that's where they're laying their head every night, that's where they will, that, that they could choose that. But often, they choose Springfield.
Yeah, well, it's very complicated.
Yes.
And the law does require the, the districts to cooperate, generally splitting those costs in terms of transportation. So in the Ben Salem scenario, if they were coming back to Springfield, there would be usually a split charge of that transportation.
Some, some districts don't play nice in the sandbox. Okay. So if you could all, if you take, if you have an iPhone, please take it out, everyone. It doesn't really hazard it happen, people have to take their cell phones out. So I'm going to walk you through a process real quick. If you have an Android, I'm sorry. There's right now, right now, right now, the app I'm going to introduce you to is, is for the iPhone only in the iPhone store. So we're going to download an app together. I'd like you to go to, if you need, if you want to connect to the Wi-Fi, please connect, go onto your phone into settings and connect to SF Board. That'll connect it to a Wi-Fi right in this area here, which, according to Mr. Catalano, has been jazzed up for everyone here to be able to get on without any trouble. Bruce? So once you're on the, once you're on the, the Wi-Fi, you, if you can go to the App Store and type in, search for Springfield School District. Springfield School District. And if you're already that far along, you're going to use the Springfield School District RAM logo that comes up. That, right below, it says "Final Site," not the one that says "Optimo" that we're trying to get out of the store. It should be out soon. But for the one that says "Final Site," we'd like you to download that if you could. We're good there.
I got it.
You got it, nice. If you only get one option, that's the one. It should say "Final Site" real small underneath it. So download it now? That's okay. If it, if it just says "Get."
I used to.
Get it. Yep. So we're going to down, download that real quick. And as you go through there, it's going to ask you if you should allow push notifications, and the answer is yes. Because if you say yes, you'll be the first one on a snow day or delay to get the notification that comes out. Maybe. Well, then it'll get posted on Facebook and everyone will know about it anyway. So the picture that you see that's, that's dancing a little bit there is the main piece there. Keep going. Okay, so if you should push, you're going to allow for notifications. And then there's just one piece that you, I'm sure you're going to play, play this, this app all night long, is for you to simply, in the upper left-hand corner, hit menu. And it slides all to the right. And then you're going to get a quick, quick drop to a lot of areas there, including your staff directory, calendar, and then you can go ahead and load your filters on to grab your specific buildings. Friend Watch is also there. So within two clicks, you're at Friend Watch if you need to submit something. And then it's your, intended to your social media.
Now, click the arrow to the right of the calendar. We will take a moment to learn how to view more events, filter to a specific school calendar, and to subscribe to iCal feeds.
Like I said, we're not going to take you through the whole piece right now. Cut that a little short, because it's quick to follow through.
Anyone have any questions?
This is the official launch of the app this evening, so you are on the first...
Great job.
...first blush of that. Thank you, Miss Crew. Did you send it?
Fern gave it two bells.
So, at this point, you should have gotten a push notification if you were successful, because we just sent you one. With the phone app. And actually, the notifications don't go away, they're actually stored in there. So if you were to hit push notifications, you can see all the previous ones as well. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, I just have a little bit of a comment that has nothing to do with your presentation, but it all has to do with your presentation. I would recommend that in next year's budget, since we are about $160 million business, that we buy the most state-of-the-art technology we can for this room and have everything that we possibly need to run these meetings a little bit more efficiently and a little bit more in times with technology. So I'm asking that, when you look at the budget, you really look at this as a corporate presentation room, because I know we've had our little bit of issues over the years, and I think it's no one's fault, but let's buy what we need to have and not beat around the bush on that front. Pay the money that we have to. Now, the whole board has technology in front of them. Maybe we can access these presentations also in front of us, or the board will be able to access it, or refer back to different policies or whatever they need to do. So, it may take a little bit of an investment, but I would really say strongly that we need to do that. Moving along, oh, sorry, you have a presentation you want to make too?
I was actually just going to add what Colleen had mentioned about Policy 103. I, I'd sent it over to, to Dr. Roach for review, just out of some concern about some language. A, a day or two after I'd received a response back from them, I, I had heard through, through another client that PSBA is, is planning on essentially merging their nondiscrimination policies and their harassment, sexual harassment policies, which, at least from a legal perspective, it's a, it's a big deal, because from, from my end, those are two of the most active policies this district, you, any district uses, because it involves students, employees, and the like. So one of the things that I've, I've shared back with Policy is, is the potential of merging 103 and 104 with the 48 series, 248, 348, 448, which are all the, the harassment policies. That might take a while for them to digest what is almost a dozen pages per policy, but that, that's something that the Policy Committee will likely be considering over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on with the minutes.
Can I just add one other appeal, please? Mrs. Fern mentioned in the board memo that she wants to know if anybody's interested in attending the National School Board Association meeting on April, I think it's April the 7th in San Antonio, Texas. I don't think I will be able to attend that. I'm encouraging some other board member to attend, and I am also encouraging that we have perhaps some presentation of some of the educational initiatives that we have put forward from the school district, so that we can sort of show the people on the other side of the Mississippi some of the good things that we're doing here. And since it is in Texas, and Texas is such an important influence over the curriculum choices that are made for the educational process in this country, I think that it's important that we have a representative there. So I'm encouraging somebody to volunteer to go to that meeting.
Thank you. Any questions on the minutes, A and B? On personnel, A through E? I'm sorry, is it through E? Did I miss one? No. No, there's an F. E, there is a. E, yes. Finance, A through F? Conferences and workshops? A through E? A through E? Other business? A to, A through C?
I have a comment on A. I know it's in the policy, but why, I would think that we could have the super, change the policy to have the superintendent, not a waiver should be given for somebody to take a trip and be transported with an alternative way. I mean, I think we should be able to trust the superintendent to make that call.
As is, I mean, that, that's my understanding what the, what the recommendation is for that piece. Maybe that's what, that's what Dr. Gooden believes, that, that for this situation, that's why he put it on there. But if you want to bring, bring it back to the policy, we could do that.
Any board comment? Public to be heard?
Just back to board comment for a minute. I just want to say that Dr. Dressler and I are both attending the PSBA conference this coming week in Hershey, and we plan to coordinate which seminars we're going to attend, so that we can bring the most information possible back to the board when we come back. I think you'll be there for the whole conference, I'll be there for Wednesday.
Great. Public to be heard? Motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.